That can go down a little bit. My voice doesn't need to be that loud, thank you very much. All right. Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting to order if you would please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I will now open this up for public comment. I just want everyone to be aware that I can only give everyone three minutes, and we are not allowed to respond. Everything that you say in public comment can't be something that's on the agenda this evening. And if you could just say your first and last name for meeting minute purposes. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay, perfect. My name is Sarah Zagoras, and I am just coming up. I would like to have the bus transportation, I don't know if it's five-star bus, added to an agenda in October to be... All of the bus issues, I know I don't... It seems like, you know, it's been a very reactive situation. Seems like there isn't a lot of proactive thought put into what's been going on. And, you know, it's not the driver's fault. I think that they are doing the best job they can. They are the front line, so unfortunately, they're the face of when people are upset. They're the ones they see, okay? It's the frontline workers. It's people that, you know, are delivering that service that they're getting upset about, and it's not them. And I don't necessarily think it's even the people in the office. It's definitely coming from higher up in the company. But going into the school system, school year, if they knew they already had a shortage of drivers, then maybe we should have limited some of the routes and modified. And maybe now what they're doing is they're moving kids around buses to cover that problem. And maybe that should have been a proactive response before. And then if you were able to hire new bus drivers, awesome, then we can maybe add some different routes. But it's been a complete mess. And like I said, it is not a bus driver issue. I think that they are doing the best they can with what they're given. Unfortunately, it's the higher-ups. And I think the email that came out talked about safety, safety, safety. But we're not seeing that. I mean, kids are being left at the school for other drivers to do another route. How is that safe? How is it safe when middle schoolers who can get on the bus on their own are left not picked up, and their parents are gone to work? How is that safe? So I really think we need to address this. I also would like it looked into. I know we take the bidding process, I know that's all legal, but there has to be some type of clause or statement in there that if they are not performing, if there are issues, then we need to be able to address that with the company. And there needs to be some type of consequences, maybe, you know, separation from them, something. Because this is, we expect late buses in the beginning of the year, that's not what this is. This is way beyond that. So I would like that addressed. And again, communication too from the district. It's better now, but it was very much lacking in the beginning. I understand communication from the bus company was lacking to the district, but the district, the parents see the district as the people who need to communicate with them, and that was not happening in a timely manner for people. So I just think we really need to focus on being proactive moving forward and not reactive. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hi.
Hello, good evening. I have actually basically some of the same issues. I understand, my name is Emily Robbins, I have two little girls in MKG. I understand the five-star issue is being addressed and worked on. I've personally had some of my issue resolved after I emailed the superintendent videos of the unsafe bus stop that we were all waiting at, basically waiting for a child to be hit. It took me emailing a bunch of people videos of that stop. Now they will be picked up at the house. So it was addressed by Officer Villaro today and the Supervisor Terry to make changes for that. But I'd like to know if they are going to add monitors to these buses if they're so concerned about safety. Because it not only would alleviate the stress and work of the drivers to help our children. I received a call last year from the vice principal. My children, my child had an accident on the bus. She's fully capable because she was on there so long. And she was shamed by that bus driver, Bus 11. And I got a call from the vice principal, well, we would have pulled over. How would you have pulled over if you have no monitors with other children on the bus? You wouldn't have. She was left with absolutely no choice. And you know what? It took away that year for her. She was a different child, the remainder of second grade. So to say that things need to change is like an understatement. Like, I really hope that you guys take this into consideration. All of which she said so eloquently, which I do not. But I'm here because I'm concerned, and I appreciate you guys listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Ashley Farini. I have students at the Nichols Middle School and the Mary Kay Good. I'm here for safety as well, but not safety on the buses. I'm here for safety at the middle school. My child is an eighth grader who has been denied orchestra due to the cluster she was put on. I was told by a staff member that she was put on this cluster because she is a special needs, service-need-a-child. I reached out with an email to make sure that I heard that correctly. I was told yes. I've emailed over and over and over again why she wasn't being allowed to be in orchestra. Finally, there was a solution. She would be put in an IEP orchestra, what my email said. So without telling my student, I said, "Go, go check it out. Go check out what this orchestra looks like." She came home, there was five students in this orchestra. Of the five, one of them was a bully that she has identified. In her IEP, in my concern, my first statement in her IEP is that the administration, including teachers and Unified Arts, be aware of this bully. It was disregarded. That legal document was disregarded. I emailed the entire team, and I said, "Effective immediately, my child will no longer be able to go into orchestra because of her safety concerns." I have yet to get an email back. That was over a week ago. I send my kid to this school every single day, hoping and praying she just comes home to me. It is an awful feeling, and I just would love an email to be replied. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? All right. We will move on to item four, discussion items, reports from school committee members.
I have a few. I'm gonna echo what they were just speaking about. I've had a few members of the community reach out regarding district communication regarding the buses. And I do have to, I do have to agree that it is lacking. People are getting notifications that all buses are going to be late without bus numbers. That people are being notified 40 to 50 minutes after their bus, their child's bus is already late, that the bus is late. And a personal that has happened yet again today. My son, two hours after the start of school time, I get an email stating he's not at school. So it creates panic. I'm 40 miles away. I thought we rectified this last week. I have two more emails within that timeframe. My husband had to call and make sure that he was physically verified at school each occasion. A child is gonna slip through the cracks at some point. I think communication, if the bus is going to continue to be late, which is an issue all of its own, we need to make sure our communication is up to par. Parents need to be aware of where their kids are, if they're at school, if they're not at school, if their bus is 50 minutes late, if their bus is going to be 30 minutes late and they're waiting out in the rain. This is all stuff that needs to be communicated and communicated well from the district. So that's what I've heard from many people of the community regarding that. And I also wanna reach out regarding the orchestra. I've had other families state that their kid was not offered to continue with orchestra at the middle school because of the cluster that they were put in. And I think that's a huge disservice to our kids and the music program. If you have kids that can't continue on with their instrument in middle school, what's that gonna look like when they get to high school? So I hope that there's some reconsideration there to help these kids continue at the middle school so they can play their instruments.
Thank you. Anyone else? We will move on to our report from our newest student representative, Colin.
Hey, guys. I'm here to give you a report on every single school. From MEC, Miss Gopiel reached out to me. They said they're continuing to work on the district's youngest workers and becoming familiar with school routine and class work environment. The first PTA meeting looks like it's going to be on September 28th, which is next Thursday. And also Pitcher Day will be on October 3rd. From Mary Kay Good School, I received an email from Ms. White. They will be using the newest edition of Envision's Math for all grades, as well as an addition of UFLI for literacy improvement in first and second grade. Also, the open house for MKG is 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. next Wednesday, which is the 27th. They also have a PTA meeting on the 25th, next Monday. The HEB, the Henry B. Berklin School, has Pitcher Day tomorrow, the 22nd, and a PTA meeting on October 3rd. From the Nichols Middle School, they have Pitcher Day next Monday. And from Middleborough High School, you start off great. We received word from Special Olympics that we're given the honor for being named a Unified Champion School for the past year. And we also started Success Box the last few weeks, or last week. And this gives students the opportunity to work on academic support or gives them the opportunity for personal time for homework, classwork, or any products they need to work on. And with that, they sign up for a certain class or teacher they can work with stuff on. Also, the football game tomorrow night. Student section theme is Blackout. Also, Homecoming Week is next week, which includes Spirit Week, the Homecoming Dinner, all Homecoming Athlete Games, and the Homecoming Dinner. Sorry, the Homecoming Dance, sorry about that. And for Homecoming Spirit Week, Monday is Minion Monday. Tuesday is Tropical Tuesday. Wednesday is Green Out Day for the child for the Homecoming Dinner who we're supplying the funds for. Also, Thursday is Jersey Day, and Friday is H.M. Spirit Friday. And that's most of the information, upcoming events for all the district schools. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any questions for Colin?
I actually had a question. How are you finding the new schedule and adapting to the...
For the most part, it's, right now, it's kinda hard to move around with. But for the most part, I like switching between the longer and shorter class periods. Like tomorrow, Friday, we have 30-minute periods every day. Just go into class, either take a quick quiz, something like that, and get out of there. It's nice.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Colin? We'll move on. I'll hand it over to you, Superintendent Lyons, for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Members of the school committee, welcome this evening. I have a couple of items to present tonight. I'm going to start with our summer program review. And for that report, I'll invite up to the table Director of Special Education Jennifer Healy, Director of Curriculum and Instruction Dr. Terry Markalitis, and our Athletic Director Ryan Sylvia. So they will be giving a report on our extended school year programming, our splash programming, and our athletic programming from the summer. And while Mrs. Healy's getting set up, Mr. Sylvia, why don't I ask you to go first just so we can hear about our summer athletic programs? We'll take it in that order.
Sure. Thank you Superintendent Lyons and school committee members for inviting me here tonight. My report is gonna be pretty brief, I think. How did you argue? Okay. There was a couple slides, but we don't have to pull those up right now. The summer athletic program was a success. It's grown continuously over the past six years. We had 577 unique participants in 13 different athletic programs in two leagues. So the youth clinics that we offered, we had 297 participants. These clinics are offered by our head coaches. They have the opportunity to run these clinics in the summer. They're four, most of them are four-day clinics. There's a couple that run weekly. One of probably the highlights of the summer program was the Youth and Community Track and Field Program. We had 67 participants, kindergarten through eighth grade. It was a really low-cost program, $25 to participate. And they came once a week and ran through a track and field program where they've learned all the different events, got some fitness, and parents and caregivers were able to walk the track while that was going on. So it was really a neat program that we offered this summer. And then the other, the two leagues, we had eight different football teams from surrounding communities participate in 7v7 non-contact football. And it's really a benefit to the Middleborough students because they don't have to leave town to participate in these leagues in the summer. And also, we're able to offer it to our Middleborough students at no cost because we're the ones running the program. And then the same thing happens with our girls' basketball summer league that we run. We had 116 participants from 10 different schools. And they were, and that was a successful program as well. The summer program, from an athletic standpoint, is not intended to raise money or bring in money or anything like that. It doesn't cost the district money. But it does offer opportunities for our students to participate in athletics in the summer, get exposed to maybe a sport that they haven't tried before, and meet our head coaches that run our high school teams. So that's basically a summary, and I can take any questions if anyone has any.
I was just going to ask real quick. Now, that track and field youth program, was that the first time you ran it this year?
It was. We've been talking about it for a couple of years, and we finally got it off the ground. And it was, if anyone was able to attend in the summer, it was really a nice thing. We kind of took the idea from some, another district, another local district. Every student that participated got their own T-shirt. They got their name tag. We had a lot of student volunteers that were kinda from the track and field team that were helping teach the students the different events. And it was just kind of a positive experience. They'd start with one whole lap around the track. For some of the kindergartners, that was enough to tire them out. And then they went into their stretching, and there are different events, and kinda went station to station. It was a really good experience.
Sounds amazing.
I have just a comment and a quick question. This was one of the areas that families reached out repeatedly, social media, through email. I think some of the school committee members heard. These programs were really successful and really, you know, a favorite of the community. I heard a lot of kids engaged, really enjoyed the experience, and I heard families echo the same. If you, if you have a child and there's an idea, like if there's something that's not offered, that you want offered, what's the best way to communicate with you about that? If, like, say, for example, you don't run a volleyball program in the summer, and somebody wanted that to run, how could they engage with you about that?
They can reach out to me directly by email, or even if they go on the website and look up in the coaches directory, whatever the head coach of that sport is. They might be able to, you know, run it by them first. Because a lot of it really depends on the coaches' schedule in the summer and interest level. There's been a number of different sports that we've offered in the summer that haven't run. Just because, like, I'll give an example. Baseball, there's so much summer baseball going on in Middleborough that there's really not a need for us to run a summer clinic. I think it's something that could be offered in the future, just to get exposure to the high school coaches. But the students are so active in baseball in the summer that it maybe doesn't make sense. So, but I'm open to anything, and getting students on our campus and using our facility.
Sure. All right, thank you. Yeah, I know the program's grown pretty considerably in the six years, but, so really, it's driven by interest. You know, if you have a concept, you kinda need an army with you so that, so that you have the ability to run it.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other questions? Just, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Both of my kids attended at least one of the programs. I think they both went to soccer, and I think my daughter went to softball as well. And they had nothing but great things to say, so I appreciate it, and thank you.
Thanks, Al.
I echo the same sentiments. My two participated in the youth programs, a couple of them. And the amount of high school volunteers is amazing. Like, they dedicate their time in the summer to come here and work with the younger kids. And it's amazing, because my daughter ran into two of the older girls at soccer yesterday, and they came over and gave her a big hug. So it's like this whole community feeling, so it's great, so thank you.
Thanks. And all of those high school volunteers do get credit towards their graduation requirement for their community service hours. So it's kind of a nice trade-off, but I know that they do enjoy working with the kids as well, so.
All right. So with that, I will turn to Director Healy to give us a recap of the extended school year program, which occurred at the Memorial Early Childhood Center this summer. Thank you. All right. So just to sort of review the purpose of the extended school year program, I know every time, you know, we come up here and we talk about it, we explain that the program is really for students who would demonstrate significant regression over breaks and instruction. So teachers, staff members, service providers are taking data before and after any kind of school break in order to determine during the school year whether or not students require extended school year programming. And so we're really looking at maintenance of skill. The purpose is to have students be able to work on previously mastered skills or previously learned skills within the program so that by the time they're coming back and entering into the school year, there really isn't too much learning loss that we have to, that we have to work with. So a lot of that data comes from the special ed teachers, the collection during the school year, and then during your team meeting, your team would identify based on that data whether or not your child would qualify. And we look at the child in a holistic way, so academically, socially, behaviorally. Services are provided in a couple different models. We have a full program that was a six-week program from Monday through Thursday, nine to one. And then we also had, ran a tutoring program dependent on the amount of tutoring the student needed. We had related services, sometimes itinerant, so students could pop in for speech if that's what they needed, rather than a full program. We also had related services working throughout the full program as well, counseling and social skills grouping. And the tutoring program remained flexible, so we had some in-person tutoring. We had virtual tutoring, and we had a hybrid. Our ESY coordinators this year, we had Wendy Yunkless return to the coordinator position in her second year in the role during the school year. She is on the behavior team as a registered behavior technician. And she had a lot of great insight from the previous year, things to work on, things that she noticed, so she was a great asset. And then we welcomed Joshua Dyer as an ESY coordinator for this summer. This was his first year, but he has served in the role of special educator at the high school, as well as a special education support specialist who kinda oversaw some coaching opportunities and working with our special ed population, Nichols Middle School and high school. This year, he's fulfilling the role of assistant principal at MKG. So as I mentioned, throughout ESY, we're looking at maintaining skills. So students are really working on their individual goals and benchmarks throughout their IEP. And again, these skills might target areas like academics, social skills, behavior, learner behaviors, emotional regulation, communication, really understanding just those school expectations and routines and keeping them embedded throughout the summer, and organization and executive functioning. So a lot of those materials get sent over by their school year teachers because they know them best, and they know kind of where they've ended the school year in terms of skill set. And so they maintain those skills, routines, so that, again, in September, they're ready, they're ready to learn. But on top of that, we also want to embed some enrichment activities and have a nice, healthy balance of academic and enrichment opportunities. So there were a few things we trialed this year that I think were successors. And then there were also some things that we've had in the past. ASD Fit is a program we brought on this year, brand-new. This is a company out of Brockton, and they really focus on adaptive fitness for our special ed population. We were able to contract with them to come in twice a week to work with our students. Our kids really enjoyed this experience. They had an opportunity to learn some basic game-playing skills outside of maybe a busier sort of full-group gym class. They were able to learn at their pace. They were able to work on balance, coordination, strength training, really focusing on some of those gross motor skills that could be lacking. So students really enjoyed this piece. I think staff enjoyed it as well. We had some positive feedback on that. And so I just, there's a link up there if you're interested in looking at it, ASD Fit. They have all kinds of different information and literature out there. But they also have some online workouts that I bumped into that if you wanted to do at home with your student, they looked pretty fun. We also tried an experience called Surprise Storytellers, where we had some staff members throughout the district pop into the ESY program and share some of their favorite books with our students. It was a really nice way to start connecting students to some of our staff that work in other buildings. So having Mr. Branigan come in and read books to our kindergarten and first-grade students was a really nice connection because then students are able to see that through-line to the high school experience. And then to have, you know, Mr. Thompson visit and be able to work with some high schoolers that maybe he's seen in the past. So we had a lot of wonderful volunteers for this, and I think our staff members had as much fun as the kids did in this experience. And we kept it a surprise so students would guess who was coming in to read to them. We also had a guest presentation. We contracted with Drums Alive last year, and it was a big hit. And so we decided to work with them again. The Abilities Rec is a company that puts on and promotes some of these unique activities for students with disabilities. So this is a great one because we were able to utilize the gym and space, and it was physical, but also had that sensory component to it. So again, students really enjoyed that experience. We incorporated theme weeks this year. So just to give the ESY staff some direction in some of the curriculum materials that they might be using. And students were able to do some pretty fun projects that related to each of the theme weeks. And we also had the luxury of having Ms. Wondler Selby, who's an art teacher at the Early Childhood Center, come to ESY and do some art classes with our students, so they were able to have that extracurricular experience. We partnered again with Wellspring Farms. We had our high schoolers attend Wellspring twice a week. This is a therapeutic farm in Rochester, I know I've spoken about before here. We partner with Tempest Unlimited, which is a vendor that works with some of our state agencies. And they were, they're able to fund this through a grant that they operate. But students get to go. They often are riding horses or brushing feeding animals and learning how to do some light yard work activities. So that's always a great experience for them. We continued with our communication efforts during ESY. That was one area we wanted to continue to improve upon, and I think we're always aiming to improve communication. We had weekly smores newsletters that went out to families. Each classroom contributed pictures and an update on what the students were working on during that particular week. Staff would also use personal communication logs, emails, and phone calls, depending on the student and depending on the mode of communication that the family preferred. We offered another summer student showcase at the very end of the program. And we also sent out surveys at the end of the program to collect feedback from both staff and families. Another way that we tried to connect with the community during ESY was by offering some family information sessions. So as you can see here, we had four different sessions that were provided by myself, Mr. Dyer, Catherine Graham, who is our speech and language pathologist at the elementary and the high school levels, and by Elizabeth Hill, who is our VCPA for the district. So we provided those in person at the MEC after different days during the ESY program. But we also offered a virtual option for families to engage. but we also offered a virtual option for families to engage. We did start to record these and will continue, but we had a technical glitch that did not allow us to save. So my, my goal is to be able to re-record some of these sessions so that we can post them for families to access at another time if they weren't able to connect with, with the, the session during those dates. Like I said, we did an end-of-summer showcase for our students, which has been part of the program now for a few years. And so students were able to pick some of their favorite pieces of work to display for families. So families were able to come in, kind of view it as if it were an art show or a gallery. And they had the opportunity to also talk with the classroom teachers, E S Y providers. It was a nice way to close out the program. Some goals for next year. So I did talk about the fact that we had sent out surveys. We, we had some respondents from the community, not a ton. I had hoped for a little bit more, but we did get some responses from families. And so that gave us a little bit of feedback and thought for next year's programming, and we also got some feedback from our staff as well. So some of the things that we'll be looking at as we continue to look at the survey data, as we continue to look at student attendance and trends, is adjusting some of the timeframes for the program. This year, our open house really kind of conflicted with that July 4th holiday, and the timing wasn't great. We'd like to sort of avoid that for next year and look at dates that would offer a little bit more availability to families and not conflict with, you know, some of their vacationing plans. We're also looking to make sure we're not, we're avoiding conflicts with other district initiatives going on. So there's a lot of other things happening in the district. So we're, we're working our, our best to avoid some of those things or at least collaborate to make sure that we're, we're doing the best we can to schedule around that. Some other things we looked at is some internal procedures. So these are the things that, you know, families and students may not see, but it's the things that we work on before the program even begins. Really just tightening up some of those procedures, hiring, communication, how we're setting up for the program, things like that. So we were able to have a meeting with our E S Y coordinators to kind of recap the summer and, and go through some of those things. And so we'll be working on those. We're going to continue efforts towards increasing communication. Like I said, we have opportunities to send out those weekly communications, but we're always looking for more feedback from the community and more input. And our high school programming, we're going to take a peek at the high school and post-grad programming. We're going to look at some opportunities for more community service and involvement there, maybe pairing with the high school community service hours and looking at creating some more age-appropriate experiences. That was some of the feedback we received. And then just monitoring that balance between academics and enrichment. I think it's important for students to have those experiences like A S D Fit and Drums Alive and be able to enjoy some of those summer pieces while still learning social skills and, and communication, but then also having that robust academic piece to maintain skill.
And that is it for E S Y, unless you have any questions.
Questions for Jen?
The, the only thing I was thinking of in terms of goals for next year is maybe trying to evaluate a way to get more feedback from those end-of-year surveys. I don't know if maybe having people available to collect feedback at that end-of-year showcase and, you know, have a tablet or a computer there that they could enter in through a chat or just to, more feedback you get, the more improvement you can do, so.
Yeah, that's a great idea. We did, we sent it electronically after the program, but I would agree, there's certainly ways that we can, you know, continue to improve the feedback piece of things. So I like the idea of the showcase. I'll definitely consider that.
Thank you, Director Healy. I just want to point out, you know, this program was reviewed a little over a year and, I don't know, maybe close to 16 months ago now. And I just want to point out for the, for the committee that there were several dynamic pieces in this presentation tonight. The addition of enrichment programs ballooned from just a few years ago. We heard about it, I think I counted six different enrichment programs, no, five different enrichment programs, which was responsive to the feedback that the special ed department collected about this program. Same with family communication, so you heard that push, that came from the program review, and then those family information sessions. So I want to congratulate you and your department and commend that effort because, you know, E S Y has been around for a long time, and that's a really innovative spin on, on kind of something that's existed for a long time. So thank you for that presentation. And with that, we'll turn to Director Dr. Mark Alitis.
Good evening, everybody. Mine's a little bit shorter. So I am going to start by highlighting Summer Splash. This is, I believe, the fourth year that we've done this, or the third year, third year, that we've done this. My second year doing this. We had returning coordinators this year, Emma Del Vecchio and Jen Gorman. They are both teachers at H B B. The dates were a little bit, we had a shorter timeframe this year. It was July 10th to August 4th, and it was only 9:30 to 11:30 instead of full day, which it was the year before, and the feedback from the year before was that was too long for many of the students, and the end of the day became a bit crazy. So we shortened it and really had some robust experiences for the students. We served rising kindergartners through rising sixth graders. Some of the highlights, we had Shark Week, Down by the Sea, Crazy About Critters, Art Squad, Junior Engineers, Spanish Basics, Basic Flowers, and Introduction to Kindergarten, which was a big hit. The parents were so excited that their students were going to be able to kind of preview what kindergarten looked like. And we did that at the MECC in kind of partnership with E S Y. We tried to keep everything separate. It was, and it went, it worked out well. The other half of the work that we were busy doing this summer was not with students. This is more splash pictures. We had our Summer Curriculum Institute, which I know sounds so exciting. And I just want to really highlight that the superintendent presented, I believe, at the last school committee meeting, our continuous, our strategy for continuous district improvement. And the work that we did at this institute is directly tied to priority goal number one, which is personalized success for all students, and priority goal number two, which is data-informed planning and problem-solving. I know, it's exciting stuff. Some of the work that our teachers did were, they reviewed the curriculum that we're currently using. They looked at that curriculum to see that, to see if it was relevant, to see if it was rigorous, to see if it was aligned, and to make sure that it was standards-based. These same educators spent time really looking at their content standards and developing a deep understanding of the progression of those standards through upgrades. It's a heavy lift, and these educators did a remarkable job. These colleagues collaborated in this four-day experience to develop standards-aligned, rigorous, and accessible lessons to meet the needs of all students. They also worked on common assessments, something that this district has needed for a long time. And we have quite a few that we have already rolled out, and we are thrilled about the results that we're seeing. We did use data to look at the needs of our students and make sure that the work that we were doing met their individual needs for learning and growth. So we made a lot of progress this summer, but we are not close to being done. We have a lot of work that we are still doing. I did put up some examples of the work that we have accomplished, and if you have time, please take a look. We have scope and sequence documents, we have a theater plan, and the middle school physical education did a really nice job outlining their curriculum for the year. Some of the other work we have done and are continuing to do is align assessments to grade-level standards. We have done a lot of this work at elementary. We need to continue it at the middle and high school level. We start our vertical articulation teams next week. The purpose of these teams is to review the work that we did this summer and the work that we do all throughout the year and make sure that we are vertically aligned and aligned to standards. So as always, we are reviewing data, and that is M C A S data, it's STAR 360 data, it's survey data, observational data, all of those things to make sure that what we are actually doing is meeting our needs. We have combined professional learning communities at the complex to increase horizontal alignment. The feedback from the teachers from both schools has been, this is awesome. We are thrilled that they are finding this helpful. One of the things that I talked about last year in our M C A S data was that we really needed to ramp up the amount of writing we were doing in our classrooms. I'm happy to say that we have increased our daily writing, and we will continue to do so. We are also writing across content areas. That includes things like writing in F I Z E D. We are trying to get writing in everywhere and doing it in authentic ways. So, you know, in F I Z E D, they're writing about, hey, what are the goals of this game? Write them down. And they can also put some math in there and chart scores and keep track of things. We're continuing to look at our curriculum for relevance and rigor. And our professional development is targeted to address our instructional needs and our individual teacher needs. Any questions?
So in terms of the Summer Splash, I think it's fantastic. My son participated when he was younger, and it was just a super fun program. So I'm grateful that you continue to offer it. I love the idea of the Intro to Kindergarten to give away for the kids to have those little short days because I know it can be a very nerve-wracking transition for everyone. For that last bullet that you had in terms of the professional development, I mean, for, for years, we hear about how torturous professional development can be for teachers of, you know, not always finding the content applicable. So in part of this review that the team did this summer, how did you potentially incorporate feedback from the staff themselves as to the type of content that they feel would be most valuable for them to get the most out of those sessions?
Sure. So one of the things that we did last year was we have a P D council, which consists of educators, E S Ps, and administrators, really talking about the P D that we offered. How we did, we created surveys as a team and read through that survey information. So that's part of what I look at. The other part is really talking to teachers. Some of the stuff that came out of this is we need more sheltered English immersion, E L L strategies for our teachers. We need to unpack our standards and really deconstruct them so that teachers understand the different entry points. And those pieces of professional development will be offered this year, both during our P D days and during modules after school, which will be optional, but will give P D Ps to teachers. So even though it's optional, they will be getting something out of it towards their licensure.
Okay, great. It'd be really interesting, I think, to kind of get more feedback throughout the year on how the teachers are receiving those kind of professional development changes or a follow-up at the end of the year, just to, to get a sense from the teachers as to how they're feeling those changes were.
Yeah, I think that would be incredibly helpful. We do, our surveys are sent out after every single professional development, and what we always ask is, what do you still need? And every year, we get more responses. The, the issue is, if we only get responses from a small number of people, we can't meet the needs of all staff. So we're really hoping to increase participation in those surveys.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had just a couple of comments. The Splash program is definitely something that our families enjoy. They've reached out to say that. We definitely heard about the Intro to K. It occurred at the MECC, which I thought was really important and impactful because that gave children who desired, you know, the ability to really get comfortable before the school year began. But I heard positive things across, it wasn't just that particular, that classroom that was so well-received. I think it's clear that this is something the community wants to see continue in terms of programming. I know that it helps families with childcare in the summer, but it also doubles as assisting with preventing that summer slide. And I know that that's an important part of what we do in the summertime here. I also wanted to just remark about the summer curriculum work. I had the luxury of seeing that kickoff. And I have to tell you, the, the work began the Monday after school got out. So if you've ever been around a school at the end of June, after the students leave, you'll see some kind of tired faces, and they've earned that, that exhaustion, I think. I was really blown away. I saw scores of educators at the high school, completely engaged. They did not look bored. And to be that level of invested on that day of the year, I thought was very telling. I got the sense, and this is subjective, of course, but that they were very hungry for this type of engagement. And I do credit Dr. Mark Alitis's leadership there, along with the principals, who were all in attendance. I think this is work that they've been looking for, and I, I just was really taken aback. I know how I feel at the end of the school year, so I can imagine how our educators feel. And I, I just wanted to note my gratitude for those teachers because it says a lot when your tank is the most empty, when you kind of put your foot on the gas, as they did. But I thought they did a nice job, for sure.
Just to add to that, we had over 45 educators who did this work. That's an incredible amount of educators the first day of summer who showed up and did this work. And it's, it is hard work. It's a heavy lift, a lot of thinking when they're really tired. So it was great.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, with that, thank you to the three of you. With that, I'll turn into the next aspect of this report, which is the end-of-year report from Director of Business and Finance, Sarah Hickey.
Thank you, Superintendent Lyons, Vice Chair Lewis, and school committee members. Thank you for having me here tonight. I did put together a brief, three-page overview of what an end-of-year report is that Anne Gagnon put in the Dropbox for you. I wanted to talk about. There are two basically huge pieces of the job that I do. One of them is the end-of-year report, and one of them is the budget. The end-of-year report you could consider to be the big data part of, of what the Department of Education does. I get a spreadsheet, I, I am a nerd for spreadsheets, you know this, but I get a, a spreadsheet from the Department of Education that has 10 tabs and 3,000 rows and 17 to 25 columns and embedded macros and formulas and, you know, it's a spreadsheet nerd's dream of a type of thing to be given. I could not make something like this. But they gave it to me to use, and in this spreadsheet, I report on every penny the school district spends over the course of the year. So for example, I put in how much money was spent on electricity at H B B and how much money was spent on electricity at M K G and how much money was, and, and all of that is then aggregated onto another, little magical things happen on the spreadsheet. So it is, it is an arduous task to do, to get all of this data and put it together and to get the numbers to balance exactly to the, the general ledger. So the, I wanted to talk about the timeline for this. This kicks off with a letter that comes from the Associate Commissioner for Education. J. Sullivan sends a letter out to school officials and municipal officials on July 11th. I'm going to read the first sentence to you. It says, "Now that the 2022-2023 school year is over, it's time again to start working on the end-of-year report." So the end-of-year report kicks off on July 11th. I have, I attended a one-and-a-half-hour training on July 24th to go over Schedule I revenues and Schedule III and Schedule I expenditures. I attended a two-hour training on August 3rd to go through Schedule IV, VII, 18, 19, 20, and summary reports. Very fun times. The end-of-year report is due September 29th. I saw the Associate Commissioner for Education at a professional development session I was at yesterday. I went up to him. I went up to him and I said, I'm not going to be able to have my end of year report done on September 29th because my town hasn't finished, hasn't closed the books for fiscal year '23 yet. So when the town closes the books, it takes me about six weeks to put together all of the information out of the general ledger into this robust spreadsheet to then submit to the, to the Department of Education. So I wanted to communicate with you that I need to write a letter to the Commissioner, the Vice Commissioner of Education, requesting an extension for the deadline for our end of year report. And that as soon as the town closes the books on FY '23, I can get to work on it.
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions for Sarah?
Town closes the book after Fall Town Meeting?
No. The town closes the books when they are done all of their work after June 30th.
Have they ever, has it, is it traditionally done prior to you needing it to meet the end of year deadline?
Traditionally, last, so last year, the fiscal year was closed the second week in, I'm sorry, the third week in September. If you remember, last year, the town accountant Steve Dooney left in July and the town brought in Eric Kinzcherf, who was a, an amazingly smart gentleman who came in the third week in July, spent a couple of days a week in Middle Borough, learned everything he needed to do, put everything together, closed the books the third week in September. I had put in for a request for an extension. There were things that I was able to get done before they closed the books last year. This year is a waiting game for me.
Now, I emailed the, excuse me for jumping in. I emailed the town manager about the closing of the, of the books and I believe that was happening this week. Did you receive communication that it's, that the year has been closed now?
I have not received that yet.
Okay, I'll confirm. But I spoke with the town manager, I think it was Tuesday of this week, but it was this week for sure. And he assured me that that was in process and about to occur, so.
So for example, with the facility rental revolving account, that doesn't, the expenditures from the general ledger are divided up. I know who, you know, how much money is spent on high school teachers and how much is high school special education teachers? And, you know, that's all comes from the general ledger. With the facility rental account, it's just a list of all the payments and I have to go, it usually takes about three days to go through the facility rental account and say, okay, this was a payment for the band for Mama Mia or this was a payment for this work that was done in this school. So it takes time to do all of this and I'm just a little backed up against the deadline.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, I will turn to the next item on my report, which is the safety audit. As we have talked about a couple of times, you know, I've been somewhat tight lipped about when was it going to happen? And tonight I'll be talking to you about it because the safety audit has occurred. So first I wanted to talk a little bit about the vendor we used. ACT for Safety. ACT is an acronym and it stands for Assess, Communicate and Take Action. That's where ACT comes from. It's headed up by three individuals. They all came out to our district, Dan Perrinick. And I did not do their bios justice here. I just gave a quick overview. But Dan Perrinick is a retired sergeant in the Winchester Police Department. He was an SRO for 15 years, but did a whole host of additional safety related work. I didn't recapture it all here, but I do have bios. If you would like to read them, I'd be happy to share them. Rick Testan is the retired chief of the Winchester Fire Department, who also headed up different sort of school-based safety initiatives during his time there. And Chip Yeaton, who's a retired Canton police officer and EMT and a school resource officer for over 18 years, is the third gentleman that makes up this group. This group was vetted by our DIRT committee, the District Emergency Response Team. We had done some research about a couple of different vendors and this was the unanimous choice of the group. Why were they chosen? Has a lot to do with their relevant experience in the field of school safety. When you get into the safety world, there's a lot of different, you know, there's private sector and, you know, hospital safety. This was, it was important to the group that we have experts in school safety. And then they also had local knowledge. We looked into a couple of vendors. I believe one was in Oregon. And there was another vendor also from out of state, but there was some concern on the DIRT committee that said, you know, look, we do have particulars here in Massachusetts and don't we want a group that's local? So that was another kind of point in the favor of ACT for Safety. They offered comprehensive review. What we saw in some of the vendors was they would, you know, review facilities, but not necessarily procedures, or they would do procedures, or it was like an à la carte menu where you had to pay extra for every additional thing. ACT for Safety gave us a flat rate for everything. It was a review of all of our DIRT procedures and emergency procedures, our facilities onsite, two-day process, interviews, discussions, follow-up. They actually also include six months of consultative, which I'll talk about in a minute, six months of consultative services after the audit. That made them a very attractive vendor. And then finally, most companies that we researched are selling safety products. So they might have a system you can buy and install in your school or, or physical products you can purchase for safety. ACT for Safety certainly sells professional development, but they're not a vendor of, you know, here you need this product to make your school more safe. And we thought that was important too, because it tells, these are three gentlemen who are very clearly committed to this work because they, they made their lives work, school safety and safety for children. So that was why we went with, with this particular group. Wow, that font's small. I'm going to have to use a bigger font in the future. So this occurred, I want to tell you, but the week before, the week of September 11th, there was some preliminary conversations, the setup of the audit schedule and review. I, everything was sent electronically with the help of Assistant Principal Andy Deisel, who heads up our DIRT team, to digitize all the procedures that we have so that they could have time reviewing all that literature before they ever set foot in the district. We also gave them kind of a who's who of players who sits on our DIRT team. Every building has a BERT team. We just love our acronyms. Building Emergency Response Team, but there's one in every single building. But it's important to know, am I talking to the principal or am I talking to the leader of the BERT team? So we gave them that rundown so they would know the kind of cast of characters as they came in. On September 18th and 19th, so last Monday and Tuesday, those were their onsite days. And we definitely worked them from nine o'clock in the morning until into the evening hours. It involved a preliminary meeting, you know, to kind of get acquainted, learn who everybody is, who's going to be doing, what, who's on first. There was a walkthrough of the MEK, followed by a walkthrough of the Berkland, a walkthrough of the Mary Kay Good. And each building had over, I think, I think over, there were four hours spent at the complex alone. When I say complex, I mean Mary Kay Good and HBB. There were four hours of just walking on facilities. They were certainly accompanied. The Director of Facilities and the Director of Communications and CTO Sean Siciliano and Jim Hutchinson were with the team the entire time. And then each building principal was also walking for their respective building. This allowed a back and forth of questions and answers in live time. Hey, why does that door look like that? What's going on with this thing? So that was day one, followed by their evening assessment. And that was about three hours long from, call it 6:30 until 9:00, 9:30 that evening. It was a rainy evening, so I know there was a lot of rain gear involved. But they walked, you know, really through the outside perimeter of all of our facilities. They looked at lighting. They wanted to see, you know, they were really focused on what does this district look like at nighttime? And I know that that's an area of concern. We have a lot of nighttime events. So that was day one. On day two, we had a meeting. We invited families and our BERT teams, Building Emergency Response Teams, so that families could articulate their concerns and the emergency teams in each building could hear them. It was really kind of a listening session. It wasn't so much a back and forth, kind of a, you know, please give us feedback that we can consider. What are your concerns? There was some conversation, there was quite a bit of conversation about the elementary schools. We've talked, you know, we've talked about this here, but I want to assure you that it was well represented. It was communicated through a couple of different avenues. From there, there was a walkthrough of the Nichols Middle School, then the Middle Borough High School, and then a walkthrough of the central office buildings before we had a closing meeting. Who was involved was kind of a crowd. I didn't list out everybody's name, but at various points, the entire administrative team was engaged in this process. Your entire DIRT team, your BERT team at each building. We had all three school resource officers from the Middle Borough Police Department were fully engaged in this process. They were there for their respective sort of assigned. They were also there for the preliminary meetings, the closing meetings. Captain Fahy, Larry Fahy was there from the Fire Department. It was very nice to see both of our safety groups present. They are extremely invested in supporting the schools through this. And their, their presence at this meant a lot to the district and is really consistent with how they've always been with us. These people have been part of our District Emergency Response Team since its inception. They're deeply committed and I think a process like this makes the most sense when our emergency personnel can engage with it. And then we had some families, as I said, as well. So that was the two days. So now in terms of next steps, where do we go from here? There is a very short window of time. As with any audit, sometimes more questions come up that once they leave or there's feedback that, you know, we'll be sitting here and say, well, wait, did you think about this? I had a parent reach out to me about emotional safety. And she said, hey, have you thought about this? So I want to make sure I communicate feedback like that. And so we have a short window to kind of allow that final collection of information. And ACT will provide a full report to me within 30 days. So I anticipate that within 30 days. So they didn't give me any indication that they needed more time or anything like that. And then I will come back, I mean, we'll have another school committee meeting later this month, but I was planning on November 2nd to come back to you with a summary of that report so that we could unpack those findings. And I want to wait until that date for a couple of reasons. One, I do need to give them 30 days. And then I need a couple of days to unpack what's in the report. And then most importantly, the focus of November 1st is a full day, Professional Development Day. Our team, our district, I mean, is going to be focusing on safety and wellness. And I thought it'd be great to recap what we were doing on that day because it ties in with this work. So November 2nd is the perfect time to really come back to you with that. As I mentioned earlier, there's a six-month, you know, status of progress monitoring that we'll engage. Now what they, yes, it's consultative. They provide consultative services, but they also come back to check on us. Not in a, I mean, kind of, but not, not as a form of accountability. If they told us we needed to do this to the lighting, they'll be coming back and asking that same question. Hey, we pointed this out, did that thing get fixed? Or we identified this issue for you, what are you doing with it? They did talk to me about all the ways that they would approach their recommendations and specifically to include, you know, a range of options so that you wouldn't be priced out of safety. Cause they said, you know, a lot of things you can do are low cost. So I'm excited by that prospect because safety is important. And I think having someone mindful of that, which you would only have if you'd worked in school districts, is, makes a lot of good sense. So that, that is what I have on the safety audit. Do you have questions about this process? Just on the six-month progress or monitoring, do they come back and do another walkthrough? Or is it just, hey, this is what we gave you and did you make any changes? Right. I don't, I don't think it's a comprehensive two-day walkthrough again, but they will come back onsite because they definitely, they aren't, they aren't just going to take my word for it, which I think is a good thing. They're going to come back and see for themselves. So I can get more specifics on that. I didn't actually ask a lot of questions about that, but I'm positive it's not like another two-day setup, like quite what we experienced this, this week. That was this week, this week.
If you could learn about that and then bring that up at the November 2nd meeting, that'd be great.
Yes, absolutely. I think that's, I can probably get it before, to be honest with you and update you in the flash too. Okay.
I think it would be helpful to kind of plan ahead for like a three month after the November 2nd, like a three month check-in, kind of like we did with the building status updates. So like three months after we get the information to do a check-in to see how are we doing? So like in February, maybe make sure it's on the agenda for a meeting to, to get an update as to how we're progressing on the items that were considered at the top of the list. So we can make sure before that six-month follow-up that we are making progress.
I think that's a great idea, definitely. I'll, I'll make sure. So after November, that, probably no later than March, I would say, right? Because that way we'd have a couple of months under our belt and we can say, how are we doing?
Yeah, February, March, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions before I continue?
Hi. Thank you. So just a couple of questions. How were the families chosen that were part of it? Was it like one from each building or?
So, go ahead, did you?
No, go ahead, you can go ahead.
I reached out to principals to say, hey, can you send some names so that we can invite families in? And, you know, it's never easy to select families. They, the principals may give a very short list. I invited everybody on the list and not everybody was able to attend. And again, I didn't give a lot of notice, but I think I gave five or six days notice only because I was a little concerned about word getting out about that audit. If there are parents who want to provide feedback that weren't in that process, I'd be happy to either receive email. If you want to email me and say, hey, can you make sure these concerns are written down? Or if you want to call me, whatever works, but I'm happy to relay. If there's a parent out there saying, hey, you didn't ask me, I'd like to offer my feedback. I'd be more than happy to, to relay that to the team. Okay, thank you. And then who's on the BERT? I know we met the DIRT team before, but who's on the BERT? So the Building Emergency Response Team is different at every building. It's not set by role. So very frequently, it'll involve your building principal, your assistant principal. Sometimes it's a member of the counseling team, like a psychologist or a school adjustment counselor. Sometimes it includes teachers or teacher leaders. It can include paraprofessionals, but they're all, they all work in the building. So for example, as someone who's across building, you wouldn't necessarily be on the BERT team because it has to be someone who responds every day. Mr. Brandon, did I miss any roles that are in? Okay, because I just want to make sure. It's, it's different in every building, but we try to get a cross-section of staff. But just primarily that work in that building, so they're familiar, okay. So just, hold on, I just want to make sure that people at home heard that. So it sometimes can include the custodial staff or administrative assistants or office staff, which are an integral part of what, of what we do every day, so there's. Is it full-time workers or part-time or anybody? As long as they work in the building. It's any employee. You don't have to be full-time or part-time status per se. But, but I would say that the people who engage with BERT, it's not mandatory. It's something that's self-selected. And then the BERT teams help with our trainings within the, within each building and they meet with the DIRT team. BERTs meet with DIRT periodically as well. Did you have something else to add? Okay. And then lastly, for the stakeholder meeting, then who, who is part of that stakeholder meeting? Is it like the frontline teachers in the classrooms? Are they there ESPs? Like who is in that stakeholder? In this meeting that we had? Yeah. It was the people from the audit because really that meeting is set up for the auditors to hear the feedback. It was the parents and then largely, it was largely administrative members of the, of each BERT because it was in the daytime. So we didn't have necessarily, you know, teachers and parents. We didn't have the whole BERT teams there. The building principal helped select, hey, I'm going to send this person over there because their role was to kind of listen and take notes as to what they were hearing from the community. You know, it's funny, what came out of that stakeholder meeting was I think a desire to, once upon a time, this district had kind of a parent group on safety that was, you know, or at least related to emergence, you know, a DIRT, a family contingency to DIRT. And I'm interested in revitalizing that group because I'm sensing a desire for families to come and engage and talk about these issues. And I think it's something that we can start organizing and, you know, basically ask if people want to join. And if there's interest, I think it would be helpful for us to hear that feedback and have a forum and a place for that feedback. Okay, yeah, that sounds great. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I can just imagine what the acronym will be for that. BERT.
It's probably just going to be called safety. Although I will tell you, it prompted a lot of good conversation. When you you, it prompted a lot of good conversation. When you say safety, what do you mean? So I think even that is a little bit vague. We have to kind of be specific in our language about what specifically we're talking about. Okay, with that, I will move to the School Street School update. It's been a while that, since I've talked about this here, and I, I hope you don't find these slides too repetitive, but we have new members of the committee. I thought you, there would be a benefit in going back a little bit before I give you the update. So I'm starting with the timeline because the school committee approved this project on June 23rd of 2022. So there had been some conversation about this project that spring, and then the school committee unanimously approved this sort of plan. I'm just trying to stop that feedback from there. The MPS facilities and custodial staff began work on this project that summer, the summer of 2022. We had first-floor moves, meaning people started to inhabit this building in December of 2022. The second-floor moves have started to occur as of August of 2023, including my office. I'm a little bit between, if you've been with me, you know I'm a little bit between two offices at the moment. We're hoping to wrap that up in the, in the days that come. And I have an anticipated completion for January of 2024. There are a couple of spaces not yet completed, which include the PD Center, which doubles as a meeting space. There's no human to put in there, which is why that's been deprioritized. And then there's, you know, administrative assistant space and a payroll office space that is still taking shape. So my assistant is coming with me and is with me inside my office while that gets completed. But because we were not taking up classroom space, we were also not priority. Okay, so I will talk a little bit about what this meant. The premise behind this project was always returning spaces to buildings and students. It was driven by increases in enrollment, but feedback that we were hearing that we were needing more space, we literally needed more space, particularly at the Nichols. I was walking through classes and seeing how full they were. So what this meant was four classrooms, two breakout spaces and a storage area going back to the Nichols that had previously been occupied by administrators and storage space, ultimately. That's, it's always been storage space. There was a classroom and a breakout space that was freed up at the Berkland as a result of this move. And then there was this sort of what I'll call a cascading effect, that because one thing moved, other things moved at both the Mary Kay Good and the Berkland, which resulted in intervention space, that's for children, when they have like small group instruction, centralizing specialized programs at the elementary complex. One of the, if you've ever been in those buildings, if you put a program at the far end of the Mary Kay Good, and you have a child at the Berkland that needs to access it, it can take you a long time to walk there. So we physically, centrally located some of those classrooms, which is much more accessible to both buildings. That included moving TLC, the Ames Program, and the language-based program, which I think better serves both buildings at the same time. There's also, I, these are, I'll tell you why, there's a little star next to them, two breakout spaces at the MECC that will be freed up, which also will decrease traffic at the MECC parking lot. And for my MECC families out there, if you've ever driven into the parking lot, I know that it's busy. The design, what's in those spaces is the transportation office, so that will free up needed space in that parking lot, and there would be less bus traffic in that parking lot. Those two spaces are going to go to Flora Clark 34th Street, but can't inhabit until the superintendent's stuff is, my, my stuff is all gone. It's not at this point. But there's a lot of files and historic information and, you know, things that still need to be moved. But that's why, that's why that move hasn't occurred yet. I brought you back these schematics because I think it's the easiest way to talk about it and see. If you look at those four purple circles in the bottom left-hand corner of the slide, those are the four classroom spaces we're talking about. Vacating these spaces meant that we could add a third team to the sixth grade, sixth grade level. Previously, last year, there were two, there were only two clusters, and it meant for higher class size. This was something we heard about in feedback from families, feedback from staff, feedback from administration. So all of those classrooms, I brought pictures. You can see how those spaces are used now. Those little tiny circles were those storage and office space. And then there's another office, see that little, at the top of that slide? That's another office space that was freed up. Obviously, office spaces are, and storage spaces are not as accessible to students, but it's still helpful to the building to have that space back. Okay, this is where it gets confusing. This is the impacted space at the complex. If you look at this circle, that first purple circle on the left-hand side, this is where the director of Communication and CTO was housed. Opening up, moving that person to School Street means that now functions as a classroom for students. That, moving over to the right, you see an orange circle called Media Center. This allowed the TLC program to move into that suite, which opened up that oval above. You see 33, 33, 30, my goodness. Is my mic up? No, it's better. That is where TLC used to be, which meant now that opened up spaces for other programs. And you can see how centrally located they are now. See how they're, they're almost exactly in the center of the two buildings? And then this little space, that, that purple circle on the right-hand side, that was the registrar's office. Now, we, we talked a lot about this. This is a very forward-facing office for families. If you're enrolling in Middleborough for the first time, this is where you would have to go. There is an exterior door, but it wasn't the most family-friendly experience to say, hey, welcome to Middleborough. We're happy you're here. Let's get you enrolled. And I think at times, it could be confusing for, for new families to our community. So that space was reimagined as well. The impacted space at the MECC are on the third floor. The third floor does not have children, just to be clear, because it, you know, it involves attic space and, and the like. This has been historically used for administrator offices. For a while, it was nurses. It's been a bunch of different things, but this is currently the transportation office. This is not great for transport, for our transportation department because it's all the way on the third floor for these people to meet with their supervisor. They have to come in, fight this parking lot, if they need a bathroom or a private space to, it's not ideal for transportation either, which is one of the reasons that's going back to Flora Clark School at 34th Street, because that's a little bit more accessible. Bathrooms are right there. It's a natural pull-in, pull-out, and there aren't students there. Okay, so when you turn into the School Street School, this is the actual use of space, which looks really similar to what I showed you before as proposed. It's, it's almost identical to what we said we were going to do. The director of curriculum, you can see, is in that back room. In the front, the front, you can see at the center of that slide, is where the registrar's office is, the technology communications office, opposite pupil personnel. So when you walk into that building, those two front-facing offices are our family offices. Okay, so we want, we want families to come there. We want them to be welcome. Behind each of them are the anchors to those areas. So director of curriculum, director of special education. When you go to the second floor, there we go. When you go to the second floor, you'll see basically four more rooms. One in the back corner is that PD Center and meeting space. This is where you can expect, once this room is completed, if there's going to be a parent or caregiver event, that's where we'll host it, or we'll have another option. We use the high school endlessly, but this will be another option. If we're going to do educator training, this is a place where we can do that. The director of student services is across the hall from there. The superintendent's office is in this corner up here, and then across there will, across from me right there will be the, will be Ann, my administrative assistant, Ann Gagnon, and also payroll. So that, again, the PD Center, the kind of the left-hand side of that slide are not yet in and not yet completed. And I want to just talk, before I go into improvements, if you're wondering, well, why isn't it completed? Oh, go ahead, sir.
Can I just ask a question about that?
Sure.
Realistically, with the work that they're doing on that second half of the second floor?
Yes.
Can you work out of your office?
That's, that's a great question. You mean, if there's work happening, what's that like? I have to give kudos to everybody at School Street. Everybody has been really, really flexible. Yes, you, anytime you walk in there, you'll hear a saw, you'll hear things going on. And yes, of course, the doors close, you know. As I told you, I, this was never imagined to be a place where administrators were just going to stay there all day. That door is a bit of a revolving door, because all of these people are in and out all day long, including me. You know, you'll see, you'll see the cars buzzing in and out of that parking lot. So yes, there's sound going on there, but that team's really dynamic. They've been really flexible, and it's not, it's not, we haven't had a lot of complaints, but I think that's a testament to the, to the people who are there, and they understand that this needs to be done.
And then, do you know what the capacity for that PD room is going to be?
Oh, how many will it hold?
Yeah.
Hmm. You know, I don't. Does anybody know that number? I don't know. I mean, it'll be, it'll be sizable. There, you can fit.
Those classrooms are huge.
The classrooms are very big. So you'll be able to fit, you know, upwards of 20, 30 people anyway. At least the, the previous PD Center we had was at the Nichols Middle School, and that housed about, it's about the same size.
Okay.
So I can't fit 100 humans there, but certainly a good amount. So we'll, I'll get that for you, though, what, what the, what the max capacity would be. I hope to fill it. Before I go into the improvements completed, I wanted to just make a note about the timeline. If you're wondering, well, you know, talk to me about the timeline. Why is it going to be until January? The majority of this work, whoops, the majority of this work was completed by the facilities and custodial staff here in the district, which meant, and I was very clear with this team about that, anytime the district needed work, this got deprioritized. It had to, because they already have a job to do. They already are very busy with the, with the five buildings that we had. I didn't want this project taking away from needs from our families and students in the district. So as a result, it's not, you know, when it has, when it was raining, the raining was, the rain was helpful. That allowed them to be inside and complete work, but it, it kind of ebbed and flowed. So with that said, and actually, even before I say that, I'd be remiss to not note the depth of skill and how fortunate we are to have that staff. Between Jim Hutchinson and his facilities and custodial team, they just did so much work that we would have had to con, to do this, we would have had to contract out at, I'm certain, three times what, what this project cost. So we're extremely fortunate, and we're very thankful for that. They really did excellent work. What they did, I start a couple of things. The basic flooring in the rooms, we did contract out for. They did not do the flooring. But the heating system, which included a boiler and then individual room unit heaters, we contracted out for the boiler, but not any of the individual room unit heaters. So really, the flooring and the boiler were the only things that this wonderful team did, did not do. There was interior painting, light, lighting fixtures, bathroom upgrades. There was IT and electrical installations. Actually, we had to, I'm wrong about that. We had to contract out for some of the IT. They didn't do, you know what I mean? You have to call the provider to get those lines. They didn't obviously do that. There was office furniture that we purchased. We had paving that was done. And then the Pierce trustees generously have offered to do the stamped asphalt to maintain its historic preservation. That hasn't been done yet. It'll be in the front entrance of the building, and we're very thankful for that. It'll be beautiful when it's done. I think the goal behind that is historical preservation to kind of keep in line with the fact that it's a piece of history in Middleborough. So now we'll cover a little bit about the costs. When I came to the committee in June of 2022, I was clear that there would be a zero impact on the FY23 budget, and that has remained consistent. At the time, and understandably, there was natural questions. Well, how much is this project going to cost? The projection that we had at that time was $300,000. The actual cost has been slightly higher at $329,400. We do have remaining expenditures, but they are, they are not significant. It's materials. And I was talking with Director Hutchinson about this today. He definitely confirms it'll be less than $5,000. So all in, you're, you're looking at, you know, $335,000 for this project in terms of expenditure. The way we funded it was out of Chapter 70 funding, foundation reserve from FY22, unspent FY20, 2022 monies, and then the facilities rental revolving account. And these expenditures, they're still carrying costs of heat and things that will cost to maintain the building, but you, we had to provide heat for that building, whether people were in it or not. But there was no additional expenditure. So with that, this is the fun part of the presentation. I get to show you some of the pictures from the first floor. You can see some of these office spaces. They are still getting decorated. Some of them are messier than others, like mine. You'll see my table with a lot of paperwork on my table. But this is the second floor. They all look very similar. They, they're, you know, we kept it very consistent, but neat and clean. The district offices, I wanted to show you the registrar's office. I wish this picture was bigger. So on that picture on the left, that's the registrar's office with a little bench that's covered in backpacks with, filled with supplies for children as they enroll. And I think that's a pretty special part of Middleborough, that when families have a need, this is how this community meets that need, and that's really amazing. The People Personnel Services Office is right across the hallway. You can see those two areas, which any family can come to, you know, review an IEP, sign an IEP, drop off paperwork, if that's easier than sending it through a backpack or in the mail. Here are some pictures of the reallocated spaces at MKG. So you'll see some of these smaller spaces that were reconverted for, you know, areas for coaches who work with students, or I'm sorry, interventionists who work with students, or coaches who work with teachers. At the HBB, you can see some of these new classrooms that have been fully reconfigured. These were up and running for the fall of 2022. This was the big push to move, and, you know, the, the inhabitants of School Street School were, did a very flexible job of sort of beating feet out of those spaces right away, so that principals had these spaces for the start of the year. They didn't have to wait and empty them out as the year began. So we were able to turn that project around in the summer of 2022. Here are some of the classroom spaces at the Nichols Middle School. These used to be inhabited by administrators. In some cases, it would be one administrator in that large room. So as you can see, now these spaces are taken up by students and desks and not overly full, not, I mean, there's no kids in these photos, only because of the time of day that they were taken. It just frees up needed space as we're experiencing increases in enrollment. Let's see. Okay, so that was everything I had on School Street. Are there any questions I can answer about the project?
I think that covered everything.
Ash.
Oh. Hello, I have a quick question. And history is not my major, so I have like a PTA question. So School Street is historically way older than MKG. And MKG is in desperate need of big fans or an air conditioner unit, and the PTA has tried to sponsor this or help a project, and we're always told that the electricity can't hold, something like that. So would you be willing to maybe help us with some tips or a way to do it where School Street is so much older and it's gorgeous now and has those units, those, those individual units? Is there a way that we could try to maybe bring that over to the MKG? We would love to be able to supply that for the teachers.
Yeah. So I would say, let's, you know, let's get together and talk. It's not just the age of the building that's the barrier for why the MKG doesn't have, there are two different issues. And I can bring, you know, Director Hutchinson back to talk a little bit about this, because this issue's come up before. So the first issue, as you've correctly pointed out, is power. There is a limited capacity. There's only so much power you can provide to a building, regardless of age. So that has to do with actually, structurally, what's going on in that building. I am in the process of exploring the capacity for the Mary Kay Good to have additional electricity brought into that building. That's step one. If I can, if we can get more power into that building, then there's probably more that can occur. But power's your first step. The second step is just structurally. One of the questions, one of my first questions, in fact, from when I started in this position, was the air conditioning question. You know, can that building be reconfigured? And the reality is that what you have to do structurally to that building to provide like central air is not going to be something that's even feasible. Okay? So you're back at mini splits or other ways of cooling the building. Until we resolve that electric issue, then, you know, otherwise, we would have just put mini splits in every single room. Till we resolve that electrical issue, that's really the primary barrier.
Right.
But I'm more than happy to sit with PTA.
Yeah, we would love to pair with you and try to make it a little bit more comfortable for the students and the, and the staff over there.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll read, I know we're fine. You'll have to.
Thank you.
Does HBB have the same issue? Is it just MKG?
Couple of things. So what's the difference between the two buildings? There's a couple of things. HBB, if you look at HBB and walk through those hallways versus MKG, there's a natural difference between the buildings. The hallways are wider. The hallways are wider because it was built for older students. Because of that, it has natural, better airflow. It's less cramped. So when everything's cramped, there's probably a science answer behind all this. But the air gets tight and that's why the temperature rises more easily. So that's the first issue. There are some spaces in the Berkland that do have air, like the auditorium. So if you remember there during the days, the first week that we opened school, when it was very hot, classes were taking turns going to that auditorium because it is nice and cool in there. But it wouldn't be accurate to say that the Berkland has air conditioning. Do you know what I'm saying? There are many, many classrooms in the Berkland that are very, very hot when it is warm outside. So air quality continues. Well, not air quality, but just the air temperature is very much an issue at the elementary complex, so. Okay, and with that, that completes my report for this evening.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to item number five was MSBA Middleboro High School Building Project. I do not have an update, but perhaps you do.
Sure. Well, we haven't met again. We we are waiting for that very last meeting and I don't think that's atypical that we haven't met. They are. I think they are waiting to have the last meeting, which means everything needs to be, everything on the punch list needs to be done because they want to get together, I think, to say, okay, it's been sweet and now it's over. So we don't have a date scheduled, but I I will tell you I'm meeting with the project manager next week to start the conversation about a feasibility study on the elementary level. So more updates to come on that. It's by the time this closes, perhaps we'll have another process to open at the same time. But no update on on that for now.
Thank you. I look forward to the day when that it no longer appears on the list. That's been appearing on the list since I think before the two of us have been on this. All right. Moving on to item number six, MSCA Mass Annual Conference is on November 8th through the 10th. If you haven't signed up to do so, Jess actually gave me a question like, why don't you contact Pam? Which I did, so I signed up for it. And so if you want to sign up but don't know how to quite register, you can always ask Pam. So that's all I have to discuss on that. The discussion on this? Item number seven, excuse me. Vice chairman will make a motion to, sorry. This is this is the most confusing part for me. So how do I?
So the consent agenda, you want to, you know, entertain, but.
Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, that being the fundraisers, 2025 boob kits, the 2026 Be Strong bracelet sales, the homecoming dinner on September 28th, the family resource or Family Resource Center request for donation, Basic Needs and Wellness and Resource Fair, and receipt or letter C, the donation to Memorial Early Childhood Center from Skyview Farm.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing, hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Do I get to swing the gavel on that? No, I'm just kidding. Okay. Vice chairman will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
It's unanimous. Adjourned. Thank you so much for all of your time this evening. Thank you.